All right, so we're gonna call the meeting to order. Do you have the camera one missing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It does six thirty. Community input. Is this here or tab? So you're, you can go ahead.
I'm the only community member?
Yes.
So Herb Ueda, thirty seven woods run. I wanted to ask the town, selectman, administrator, whomever, what I can do as a next step to advance Route Four safety. There was a thirty-seven page report I sent to you all. I don't know if you'd already gotten it. That was done on behalf of the state really, but as a freebie. UNH student has this capstone project. But it was done, you know, Bill Lambert was the sponsor. So this report has options for improving the safety. And so in my mind, the next step, if the town is interested in pursuing it, is for someone to go to Stratford Regional Planning Commission and represent this and try to initiate the process for starting a project that eventually will get put in their, you know, their capital plan. So I've been reading through the Stratford County, you know, how they do their business and all, but it sounds like there's already a representative from the town that's supposed to be on that.
And that's Jessica.
Me.
Okay. Okay. So my question to you all is, is what can I do to either help advance the cause personally? Or can you inform me how we would go about doing that as a town? If the town supported, you know, such a move, but...
I have a clarification because it's a state road.
It is a state road.
So we don't have, I mean, we have a recommendation, but we wouldn't have any way of telling them what to do and how to do it, right?
No.
The state has to make that decision.
But well, the state with the recommendation of Stratford Regional Planning will prioritize projects. They would certainly, you can ask for things to get on the list and you can advocate projects.
Okay.
But they will do what they will do.
Okay.
But that's exactly the role I'm either asking you to play or me as your representative to play because it, and if you think... So that's a big role in reading everything they do. And I haven't really talked to them much. It sounds like that's really important. The community input is a lot of how they prioritize. You know, they don't just come up with projects on their own. Towns come to them and with either a well-built project or a need. And they are, then they represent that project to the state. But we already do have a bit of a leg up in the fact that I've been beating Mr. Lambert over the head for five years now. I mean, he's fully aware when this thing, if in any form showed up or any of these options showed up as an item on Stratford Region, you know, on their list or as a potential capital improvement product, project, and it actually got to the prioritization stage or the, you know, the funding stage. I mean, as long as Bill's still there, he can't say he hasn't heard about it, that's for sure. And I think he's an advocate too.
Yes.
It's just that they don't take on projects directly as we've learned from dealing with them. You're right Denise, we can't tell the state what to do.
Right.
And begging doesn't really help much. This is the vehicle that they described that you do it through.
Can I ask one more question? Didn't we get a, didn't we just find out that you don't have to be a board member to be on the committee?
We didn't, we knew that. We knew that. And so that would be my recommendation.
Are you at all interested in holding a seat with Stratford Planning?
Yeah.
As regional planning?
You know, I guess I'd have to look a little closer at that. I mean, personally, I had the time and the interest, but I'd have to, I'd be kidding myself and them to say that I wasn't, you know, a one-horse, you know...
Everyone has an agenda.
You know what I mean? It would seem disingenuous for a guy to get on a board pushing the one thing.
Not at all.
You know?
Well, you still have the support, there would be a board member as well as a resident.
Okay.
So would me just, I mean, it's something to think about.
No, absolutely.
So...
I'm excited enough about this project to do whatever it takes.
I mean, yes, it is. But we'll give him some time to think.
Well, he said we should nominate him tonight.
Again, as long as...
Jessica.
I'm not usurping the existing representation.
No, no, no. I would still be... She would still, we have two seats.
And as long as the folks up there don't say, "You can't have folks coming in here with their pet project in their back pocket." It is an agenda, clearly it is. Might I get in there and find out that it's exciting work and I want to do it for the next ten years and work on every project in Stratford County? Probably not. You already wrote me into a few other things that I'm not sure I can do.
Yeah.
No, I'm just passionate about this one intersection, to tell you the truth.
You can also go to a few meetings and decide that it isn't really your thing.
So go ahead and nominate me and I'll be more than happy to.
Okay.
I am a company...
I don't know his last name.
You're a selectman board member.
U E D A Ueda.
All right, I will nominate Herb Ueda to the Stratford Regional Planning Commission.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor that say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so you have a seat and Jessica will also be holding a seat as well.
Okay.
If you...
I'll engage you then and figure out your, okay, your meetings and what the requirements are.
And if it's...
They will need paperwork from us to confirm that decision. So by all means, call them and let them know and like that. But they're not going to take any official recognition until they get paperwork. But with that motion, it doesn't have to wait until the next meeting. Well, we can move that along.
Okay. I'll come by later this week and get from you whatever you think I need.
And if you find out that it's just too much, just certainly let us know and we can, you know... But I think that one person who's done so much of the research is you and it would be great to have you aboard.
Doesn't take a lot of research. All you have to do is try to cross it.
Oh, I know, I hear you.
We all research it every day for thirty seconds of terror, you know? But I guess the only other concern I have is how would you...
Will you be in that?
No, actually, you emailed that to the board.
I did, I did. Thirty-seven pages.
Then I could send along.
Yeah.
So, you know, frankly, I mean, he's a college student, right? So he explored everything from soup to nuts. And some of the options in here are, they're not viable. They're, I mean, he's just studying and he's not, some of them are just, they're not viable. But there's a couple that I think are actually, albeit expensive, you know? But I guess the only other concern I have is, is I don't want to propose or suppose that I represent the whole town in this matter. I don't know how much more deliberating you all want to do or how much more public input you need. We've had several meetings in this room where folks came in, not a big crowd, but the ones who came in were pretty vocal that, you know, but if, but if chief of police or fire department sentiment is such that this is a non-starter and that the town doesn't, at least in spirit, support it, you know, it'd be nice to know. I don't want to go bang my head against the wall if, but I, you know...
I think anybody who drives on that road should understand the importance of at least trying to do something to help.
Okay.
So I'm in support of options.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't had a chance to read that report.
Yeah.
But I'm sure there's an option in there that's workable in some way.
I guess the only other negative I can think of is...
How about you?
I don't think any of these things will ever cost the town a penny.
This is what I'm talking about.
But you never know.
Bear, right?
You never know.
You never know.
But they'll always have the opportunity to sign on the dotted line when time comes.
Right. That's true because every time they propose a change, they get our input, right? Just like they did when they upgraded Iowa.
Right, so I would worry about that. I think they'll evaluate that.
We take its course and then if the public decide, no, they don't want, let's say, a stoplight, you can get plenty of input at that time. That's probably years from now.
Right, it's not going to be immediate. So I guess, you know, my piece of advice about that is to continue to report back to the board and for Jessica to report back to the board about the progress on the project and, you know, so that we can know that in five years, we should expect to be going to be on the hook for whatever percentage of a what-cost project, for example.
Yeah.
Things like that would be good.
It'll take five years probably.
Whatever, or at least, you know...
We may find out that it's, there's no chance in hell this thing even makes the lists, you know?
Well, I got pulled over right away when I started living here. I live by Route Four, excuse me. And I was driving down and someone was stopped in front of me. I was driving down Route Four and I went around them, probably scaring someone trying to go across in Bear Road. And I got pulled over and they said, "You know that's illegal?" And I said, "No, it's not." And they're like, "Yes, it is." And I was like, "Oh, okay." So now I stop and every single time I stop because someone in front of me has stopped to turn or if I'm turning, everyone always passes me on the right. So I've asked the chief, like, "That's crazy." And he said he's put up signs and all sorts of things and nothing gets people to stop.
Yeah.
So I, something has to be done.
Okay.
Um, the next meeting is February twenty-seventh at three forty-five PM.
Yeah, I saw that. It's at Rochester City Hall, right?
Oh, is it? Okay, the email I just sent, so they didn't know the location yet.
Oh, they do it at the city hall.
The organization is based out of the Rochester City Hall.
Well, no, not the city hall, but they're, they have a community center.
The complex, yeah.
Right, that's next, behind the high school.
Yep.
Where they have a bunch of human services.
Oh, that's right. It's a new old, new old high school.
Yes.
That's right, you're right.
Yes.
So I'll be there.
Me too.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for stepping out. Thank you.
Yeah. Twelve minutes, that's what. Five more than we thought it would have been.
All right. Consent calendar. Everyone okay with what's on the consent calendar?
Yep.
All right. By consensus. Building inspector junkyard license. One, that's...
There are three of them. The two past years and the one present year.
Okay.
How you doing?
Good evening.
Yeah, I've been out to the site a few times and contacted the state DES to make sure he's in their good graces. And I feel confident at this point to be able to submit the two latched years in the current year for your signature so that he can get his dealer license. There's also a point of use somewhere where your folks are on the side.
So he's covered all...
If you agree, yes.
Covered all of the requirements that he was asked to do?
Yes, he has.
Okay.
I mean, the front, oh, he did do the gravel and the seating, you know, back in the spring, but of course that gone all chewed up. But he knows that he has to maintain it. He's been, as far as I know, been towing a line. And the state has nothing on him.
Okay. So if this is just the junkyard and not the CAS, correct? And is that still being worked on?
Yes. Civil consultants is the civil engineer and they sent us a kind of a photo, you know, a Google map thing showing the boundaries and the setbacks and all the rest of, you know, the square footage. And it's in, it is in preparation to go in for a cycle review in front of the planning board, but they haven't, we don't have a date yet.
Okay. For CAS or for this?
For CAS.
CAS, okay. So this is done?
This is...
As soon as we sign it, then it's a done deal?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any questions?
No.
Okay. So do we need a motion? Do we need a motion to accept this?
We're each signing it, so we actually don't...
Well, that works too.
What's that? Because we all sign it, we don't need a motion to accept? Because you're accepting it by signing it?
Essentially.
Okay, all right. Is he going to sign this? Because I don't see his signature.
Yes. I'm going to let him know that it's here and he owes the money for the three years. Oh, actually, he knows that it's here. I mean, he's going to come by tomorrow to take this up along with those.
And sign it? Because we're going to have to have our copy with his signature as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So do you need three copies signed? Is that why we have three copies?
It's three separate years.
Two rear, like two years where it is.
Oh, I see. Oh, okay.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen.
The top is the date there.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And at some point, I do think it's wanting to discuss the fee issue because we're still at fifty dollars and the state, if the RSA says it can go up to two fifty, you know, that'd probably be quite a jump, but...
Well, we've also, you've invested a lot of time in this and certainly more than a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, so is everyone paper signing this? Miles, yes? Jessica?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I guess we will sign it.
And this, this is the renewal of his dealer plate. There's a spot at the top here for, it only needs one.
Who initials the front, Caroline?
Both of you or all of you, you know, it doesn't really matter. The point is to...
You looked at it?
Yeah, that you're proving that too.
Big dollars, that's it.
And did these two sign?
Yeah, I think we do need a motion for this.
This is only one signature?
No.
All right.
So this covers year eighteen, nineteen, and twenty or seventeen, eighteen, nineteen?
Seventeen to eighteen.
Okay.
Eighteen to nineteen and nineteen to twenty.
Okay.
So we'll be back again...
For July first.
Right.
It'll expire on June thirtieth.
Of this year.
Of this year.
Okay, all right.
It's Jessica's.
Can you do this one? So are you going to take a copy before you give them?
I'm going to take everything and scan them and get signatures and payment and then he'll have access to them most of the time.
All right. So this, all right, so...
Awesome.
This is what you brought when you gave us ours last?
Yeah.
So this is to get his, here, dealer registration, okay?
The renewal of the dealer license.
The renewal of his dealer license, okay.
So a move that we authorize Denise to sign the dealer registration for.
So good, all right. All those in favor say aye or aye? Okay. Inspiration data, certificate of approval? June thirtieth?
June thirty, twenty twenty, yes. Right?
For his dealer plate?
No, this is...
This is the dealer plate?
It's the dealer plate.
But this certificate of approval is as per the town, right?
Right, his license does expire June thirtieth. So I'm not sure that you could put anything else there.
Right. If she's got a problem with it, he'll let you know.
Yeah, okay. Or call me.
Yeah. Maybe he'll call the chief. What, do you want to call me?
So... So do I click his name? I certify that. I click Mario's name or how was it?
Mara.
Mara? His name there. Doing business as days auto? That's what I fill in there?
Days auto, yes, please. I probably should have done that.
N E L L I S?
Yeah, C A S S A N N E L I.
A N N?
E L I.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have to do is that, right?
That's it. Yes, ma'am.
And you're going to take this as well? Okay. And she'll give that back. Thank you. All right.
Oh, no.
I don't think you do.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that you had, you know, that he could answer any questions you might have about junkyard and towing. So I thought it would be better that he present the licenses.
I agree. And it's nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well.
So, yeah, usually we'll have questions down the road, so I'm sure we'll be talking.
Sure. I bet. Hey, folks, well, good night.
Good night, thank you for all the hard work on that too.
Sure. See ya. Good job, you too, right?
Please.
Just to give you an update on the new cruiser situation. From two-way last week, it has all of the equipment installed in it. It's ready to go. With the exception of two things, you need to install the graphics on the car. We have the graphics, we bought them last year. We just have to install on the car and have the anti-theft device put in it sometime in the next two months. But to start with, I do have a purchase order here to have the graphics installed on the cruiser. It's purchase number one eight nine three, the two-way communications for three hundred dollars.
What is the graphics?
I mean...
What is the gra, what is graphics?
The graphics, the striping.
Oh, the striping. They do that, two-way?
They do that.
Oh, okay.
They install, they don't make them, but they install them.
Do you want to do all of them once?
This is something different.
Purchase order number one eight nine three for two-way communications, two two-way communications for graphics on the new cruiser in the amount of three hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? Negative. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And by going with a different vendor this year, we actually saved four hundred dollars off the cost of the graphics from two years ago. Okay, we did receive the annual alarm monitoring invoice from Pro Technologies. That's two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents. Last week, we had to call Pro Technologies to come in because the software for the security system didn't work in the new computers. They had to be upgraded, so they had to install the new software. That was two hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-five cents. And while they were here, they actually had to fix the camera in the lobby of the hall up here because it got knocked to the side during the painting process. So when we walked in, when we watched the monitor, it was like this. So they fixed that.
Okay.
And during the weekend, when the power went off a couple times on the building here, it did something to the water sensor, so that's been activated all weekend long. So they have to come and repair that. So I'm estimating twenty-seven-five dollars for that. So the grant totaled seven hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-five cents to Pro Technologies with purchase order number one eight nine one. And that will come out of the town home maintenance fund.
I'll move purchase order one eight nine one to Pro Technologies for a total of seven eighty, seven hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-five cents.
All right, any further discussion?
So they charge to reset the water sensor?
Well, they're going to charge to, it's a service call.
Oh, okay.
It's oddly for a...
So they're going to charge it, it's kind of, yes.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Um, no, it's only does.
What?
Blank paper.
Blank paper, no, blank paper.
Oh, sorry, no, but I...
It's a little bit accurate, so...
Oh, right.
They'll probably be able to phone system. The last, last fall, we tried to go purchasing the seven computers to replace all of the networking downstairs. There must have been a communication break up between myself and our IT person. He actually wanted aid for us to replace. He also replaced the computer that is solely dedicated to the internet. That computer there was actually a hand-me-down from the prior networking system that we had. So that computer was even older than what we get rid of the seven. So I did receive an additional bill for that. And that's purchase number one eight nine two, Pro Vantage, for the sum of five seventy-two ninety-two. And that will come out of my equipment fund.
I'll move purchase order one eight nine two to Pro Ventil for HP desktop to replace P, the internet computer in the amount of five hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-two cents.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor that say aye?
Aye.
Pro Ventil.
Pro Vantage.
Pro Vantage. P R O V A N T A G.
And the last one, our phone system got hacked last week. Apparently somebody got in and initially when you called our dispatch line that rings here and dispatch, they were getting a travel agency somewhere. And I guess a number of calls were made on the two-seven, two-four line to the Caribbean. So the town administrator made me aware of that Friday morning and she took care of first light with a phone line issue. I called Accutel to see if they'd come and install some software to prevent that from happening in the future. And they did. They actually, today, they installed the software. So folks from outside should not be able to get into our phone system in the future. We're not the only one, apparently. This has been happening to a number of locations and agencies and when somehow they're getting into their phone system and all of a sudden they're charging overseas calls to...
Is it just the police department or the town hall?
It was just that line.
It was just our line.
Okay.
But now we have the software. It shouldn't, it should protect the entire system, including your lines up here.
Okay, good.
So if we have any phones up here that do not have a access code to get into them, we should enter them for voicemail, okay? So the line that they get into was our three-on-one number, which is for the reception desk.
Okay.
We don't use that phone to receive voicemails. However, I don't know, somehow when they sign in, they can see which ones have passwords and all. I don't know how it works, but that's the one that they get into somehow, so...
It's probably just block four, so maybe try, try them all.
So I purchased number one eight zero seven, made out to Accutel. And I mess them and repair the phone system today for two hundred and fifty dollars and that will come out of town home maintenance.
Is that a renewal?
I'll move a purchase order one eight zero seven to Accutel for two hundred and fifty dollars for repair to the phone system.
All right. Is that every year fee or is it just a one-time?
This is a one-time, yes.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
We're, I anticipate I'm high on that estimate, but I'm going to make sure there's enough.
Okay.
So are we exposed financially from this, from the hack? Or just the calls to the Caribbean?
Just the calls to the Caribbean.
I don't know what that...
And it's not clear whether or not they're going to, I believe they'll rebate them back to us, but I don't have clarification on that yet.
Does it even cost money to make long-distance calls anywhere? I don't know.
It does.
It does. It depends on your phone, especially with business lines as opposed to personal.
It's like seven dollars a minute to call, whatever, from a cell phone right now.
Okay.
Okay, so all those in favor that say aye?
Aye.
That's all that I have for you, I think, for me.
Okay.
Just to give you an update on Bear Road, the highway bond was kind enough to move the skidnom sign for us. So it's no longer sitting right at the intersection of Slager Road and the stop sign looking to the right, it's not blinking right there. They moved to the opposite side, so...
Any other complaints?
No.
Good.
So...
Good.
I do feel like it's, it's been effective for the most part. I've had to get a little lot less cars.
Have you looked at the speed data here that is clicking?
Um, it didn't get put out last week. It's going to be put out sometime in the during the future.
Good.
Yeah. And then once, once we technically that, we'll look at the last one and compare the, compare the two. But I sat out there for a couple days last week and it was obvious that people were driving much slower.
Nice, good.
So, but I did have one that went through Slager. I was sitting in front, across from Karma's house. And the guy came through the intersection, one-thirty, right past the sign, then flew to the fifty by the time he got to your house.
Did you?
Yeah. What am I going wrong here, Dave? I just thought I'd give us one. So...
All right.
All right.
Thanks, Bob. Good night. All right, so, um, George?
Fire department is here for...
Well, you know, but George has been waiting the longest.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Last week, we had a issue with the, the, go up one of the wheels, the wing pounding on it. Had to come back and it had air hissing and there was a crack inside the wheel. We had that road service come up and fix that. So I got the old Sullivan tire. Of course, the road service is not cheap. The total of three hundred and fifty dollars and seventeen cents, which includes replacing one of the wheels.
How much?
Three hundred and fifty.
They're pretty big tires, aren't they?
Oh, it's a hundred and thirty dollars an hour, that's right. But they didn't put the wheel back on. They brought us the wheel back and friends at C and J, we took the truck over and they changed it out for us in five minutes. We don't have the equipment to jack up the trucks, the big trucks. And for as many times as we fix on time... times as we fix on time, it's not something that's, you know, even lights and, something like that, and bring it over here anytime, and they've offered, they told us at the end of the season, we wanna take our trucks in the car wash, do the undercarriage wash and everything like that. And I actually spoke with them today about probably doing some of the service, the light service, you know, oil changes and stuff that happen once, once a year, and they're, they're willing to do that for us instead of having to send it to Dover and having two guys bring a truck down and stuff like that, so I'm sure they'll treat us, they're all certified again. So that's, you know, it's up to you people if you want me to go with, pursue that, I mean, I would talk to Jim Sadie, and he says, anything we can help the Howard Fund with, you know.
Probably get some sort of, I don't know, I don't know if we could get an agreement, but, forget, those are just random thought.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have, I don't, I don't have a thought with it.
We'll save, save on you.
You know, it's, it's, you know, save, you know, it's, like he said, we can't do all your manages.
I mean, we're talking about the basics.
He said, but, you know, but once, you know, we always have the oil changes and stuff in Greece, and they go right through the trucks right before the winter. He said, once or twice a year, he says, we don't have a problem, we can take the trucks in and go through them, they do all, the state relies on them for bus inspection, so, you know, we're gonna have a better look at, you know, our vehicle probably, I mean, Dover's busy. So, I mean, just another thought, when he said, you know, we can help you guys out, I figure we, see if we can do it, no problem. So the PO is for $350.17 for the road service and repair, replace the rear.
I'll move purchase order 1787 to Sullivan Tire for $350.17 for tire repair.
All right, all right, so you do have to let us know going forward where, where it's coming from, so it was vehicle maintenance? Vehicle maintenance?
Yes.
Yeah, you need to log, log it on there, what account?
Yeah, that'll be interviewed.
Going forward, we need to do that. All right, any further discussion? Nope. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
1787.
They should have told me more expensive. The backhoe is, the back, the traction tires are worn out. I mean, we can't get any traction with, with plow and snow with it now. They've got the agricultural type tires, which, track machine's five, six years old now, so it's time to replace the rear tires on it. I tried to wait to go until after the budget season, but I tried bombing that the other day, and it's spreading more the time you can't make that half the hill, so. Two new rear tires, they come to the shop and do it, so it is a service call, man, it's not a fact that we can drive it to Rio or wherever you. It's for $1770. Two new tires, we're going with a different style tire. Supposed to allow me twice the life of the agricultural tire, so should be able to get some better life and better traction out of it. And that is for Sullivan Tire also, for PO, number 1783, for $1770.84. They have on their bill, $100 for tire disposal, we're gonna keep the tires in disposal myself, so it'll be a hundred dollars less than that, so.
I'll move purchase order 1783.
That's in the vehicle maintenance.
Sullivan Tire for $1770.84 for two backhoe rear tires.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, we, we do have a result, but we have to go into non-public. Can I ask Mark how much he has? Can you hang around? You can hang around, Mark, have you got a lot?
Nope.
Okay, why don't we get him in here, and then we can go into non-public with you? Okay, all right, all right, Mark.
One piece, one piece of business.
We've got another year ahead of us on the front tires.
One purchase order. For firefighter one course, firefighter one and two, for our two members that are going through now. They came up, Larry Straffan teaches a class, he's the one that he runs up in North Berwick, and he's required then, the, the two members came up with their portion at the beginning of class, and now we're either halfway through, so he wants the rest of his payment, so. He's a little more gray spirit, but he hasn't, he's not doing it this, so I'll submit the PO now. Like I said, it's coming out of the training line item. 262 is purchase order 1798 to Larry Straffan for firefighter one course for firefighters' Petronella members, $1350.
I'll move purchase order 1798 to Larry Straffan for $1350 for firefighter courses one and two.
Seconded, all right, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is here, he's also got a form he wants to go back and fill out. It's all time filled out, you see the rush, Mark. He's got, he's next week, next Monday is holidays, which are, which are probably weekends that is. There's one more.
What holiday is that?
It's Monday.
It's President's Day.
President's Day.
Now, is the module open?
Yeah, you know, food banks, all that stuff.
Wall Street.
Um, oh, oh, take the stuff and you keep the folder if you want. That works pretty well.
The other thing that's in here that I just see is I submitted this on Thursday, this was a bill for Hilltop, oh, I got another one.
Yeah, that's okay.
It's all beautiful.
We'll take care of it, thank you, including.
Yeah, it is a holiday.
That's great, thank you.
The market's closed too. Anything else?
That's all I got.
Okay.
Anything for me?
Nope.
Thank you, thanks.
All right, so, um, non-public, what's your?
Yeah, I, I move we go into non-public session for RSA 91A, Home 3, Section 2, Larry Bay, Person 0.
All right, so, roll call, Jessica, Chris, Denise, yes, Miles?
Yes.
Okay.
Sitting in a chair in the gym, directing me.
Oh, my God.
My God.
Oh, with the.
杯子 water.
Yeah, the sip.
Sorry. Now, it's like here.
Salma?
Yeah?
Your camera off?
Sorry.
The thing I was reading about was traction.
Sorry.
Recently, like traction is awesome. Things where you, I kinda want one, and you, it lays you back.
All right, so, um, we're gonna do welfare at the end of the meeting, 2020 town meeting.
So we had our deliberative session, I thought that was a great event, we got a lot of public comment from the people who were there, so that was good.
There's a lot of people there too, compared to school.
So I'm really impressed with that, actually, it was more than I thought we would have seen, so for a deliberative session, that wasn't bad for turnout. So now we're working on getting the town report ready. Um, we need materials by the end of this week, people, most of them are in, there are just a few stragglers, one of them is, I didn't print it out, and I'll print it out if, if you all haven't really reviewed it yet, but Miles drafted a report for the select board to include, did you all have a look at that?
Well, all I saw was three small paragraphs, did you do something else?
No.
It's just that email?
Just seeing them a little short for a minute, but, I don't know.
That's what, I, I only looked at last year's, but.
So if you wanna take that and expand upon it?
Yeah.
No, I'm not saying, I want to do that. I don't wanna do it, but, um, I'll look at it tomorrow while I'm at the polls, you know, but, I mean, it's, as long as we, like, get everything.
I think, I'm reading right now, it sounds fantastic, okay?
And you have some things that need to be filled in?
And, and we can fill, find out the answers to the, to your information.
Some things I just did.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Cause I was writing it, well, I was multitasking during a meeting.
Okay. All right, so, um, yeah, I mean, if you're both okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll also be working on the voter's guide addendum to let people know what happened at the deliberative session for the majority of people who weren't there on Saturday, recap the meeting and let them know what they're voting on.
So things haven't changed?
Well, the elderly exemption changed, so.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but otherwise, to let them know minimally that things haven't changed, we can educate them on other things, more than we did on the voter guide, if you want, so you all can be thinking about that, if you have thoughts about how that should be.
Did we do that last year? I don't remember.
We did.
Oh, yes.
Okay, I don't remember.
How much does it cost to do it twice?
Um, it's about, I think, $240 or $250 or something for printing.
Yeah, I think $220.
Something about that for printing, another.
Oh, for printing, yeah.
For printing, and then another approximately $200 for the every door direct, so. We don't have to do, so we can save in printing costs by making it not as large, cause it doesn't need to be as large for the addendum.
Yeah.
Um, but then it needs to be on cardstock, which is more expensive, um, to meet postal regulations. So the other thing we can do is see if, like, we can just do kind of a large postcard, and what are the sizes, um, what's the size limitation on that kind of thing, and just do a, you know, a single-sided something. Um, but just to remind people of the voting date and try to encourage people to come out to vote.
Yeah. Yeah, whatever you, we have it in the budget, right?
Yeah, it's, yes, yes, we budget for this, yes.
The whole thing, okay, then, yeah, I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
Have I got Jessica?
Yeah.
Just do what you plan, yeah.
Okay.
All right, tax bills.
Okay, so, um, we have been mailing out tax bills through a tax service for the past couple of rounds. We've been doing that with existing supplies. In other words, typically, when we were doing tax bills in-house, we'd have to order tax bill forms through Avatar, and we'd have to order envelopes to put the tax bills in, and the.
Should be careful when you leave, it's that nice up.
Oh, thank you, thanks, George.
Thank you. So Mailways, who has been sending out the tax bills more recently, has been doing so with existing supplies that we have supplied. They will do it for the same price while printing on plain paper. I'm not sure about the envelopes, but they will print on plain paper, which means, so we, we're at, we're at a point now where we can spend $175 to purchase tax bills, tax bill forms from Avatar, and I think that's one year's worth of tax bills, it may be more. If we go with the Mailways company and send tax bills through them, then we don't need to spend $175 on the forms because they'll print on plain paper. So we wanted to revisit this conversation after the last tax bill round went out before the next tax bill season, so it's just a good opportunity because they, Avatar needs us to order those bills pretty soon if we want those forms from Avatar. So you don't have to make a decision about that tonight, but you need to make a decision soon, or rather, Avatar needs to know pretty soon if we need to order tax bill forms through them.
So we'd save $175, that's the bottom line?
Minimally, there's still, you know, you save a little bit on postage, so it's something like $60 more expensive, I think we decided, once, you know, they, they get less, they, they get a discount on postage, so there's a slight discount on postage, plus there's a labor fee, so I think it's slightly more expensive than if we do it in-house, but doing it in-house, it occupies a lot of people's time, and we need to find volunteers. This, you know, now that we're buying supplies, it's a savings of $175, but I don't know over how long, I would say it's minimally a year.
Okay, so in-house, meaning we use our printer?
Right, and our ink and our manpower to make it happen.
Okay, but, and how are they gonna get to the location which they need to get?
They apparently pick them up, in fact, they'll pick up the newsletters, so we didn't realize that was the case, but.
Is there a fee for that?
No.
Okay.
So they do a lot of tax bills, a lot of communities, and they do other communities in our area, and so there isn't really a fee.
Okay.
For that, for that.
I know it was an issue because Mike used to do it.
It was an issue.
So I wanna make sure that we're not gonna say yes to this and then have an issue getting them there, so.
Right.
Okay, all right, what do you think?
Save $175.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, um, election coverage, so is anybody planning on being there tomorrow?
Yeah, I, um, I meant to send a email, I'm sorry, my job is crazy. Um, I can be there like seven to, um, it'll probably be like 12.
In AM?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
And then obviously.
I thought we, oh, I thought that when we done our election coverage, it was for the town election, for the primary.
Where is it supposed to be at all?
There's supposed to be, yeah, board coverage for all the elections.
So I put in for some afternoon time off, so I will be there in the afternoon, and then I'm gonna go back and be there, are you gonna go back and be there at night too to town?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so you're just talking about.
We have, we have to be there.
Yeah, yeah.
Certainly.
So.
When are you gonna get there then?
I, I'm probably gonna be there like between maybe one, one to four, go home for lunch, and then I'll come, uh, dinner, and then I'll come back and do the rest of it and be there to count.
Okay.
So.
Is it okay if someone's not there from 12 to 1?
Yes.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Suzanne had offered, and we checked with Charlie.
And that is okay, but you are supposed to have somebody all the time.
Yeah.
So I would say, if you think you need coverage from 12 to 1, delegate to that, that to Suzanne or somebody who's willing to do that, so that you have some kind of official coverage all the time.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll be there at 4.
At 4?
Yeah.
And then you'll, are you gonna stay at 10 as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so that works, I could probably even come earlier and not have to worry about, I could leave probably at noon and do, what did you say, you were gonna do 7 to noon?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I can probably stay.
So I could, I could probably be there by 12:30 to 4.
Okay, I can stay until 12:30, yeah, I mean, do we wanna deputize Suzanne just in case?
Oh, absolutely, no, no, yeah, did you talk to her about that already? Cause Charlie okayed it.
Um, so she's willing to, she just needs to know if you want her to and for what hour, what time, so.
All right, why don't you, just to play it safe, cause I think I didn't ask for it until like 1 or 1:30, so why don't you see if you can come in like 11:30 to 1 or something?
All right.
Yeah.
And, and then that gives you a little time, you just need to leave a little.
Yeah.
And you wanna come in till 4?
Be at 4, yeah.
Okay, and then you'll be there until the end?
Yes.
Okay, so I think you'll probably be there some part of, to the end.
Sure.
So, okay, that sounds good, great, thank you.
Do we have?
It probably wouldn't hurt.
I'll move for what?
To test.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
I'll, I'll move that we deputize Suzanne Hurey as our representative at the election in the case that we, one of us can't be there.
Okay, good, all right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that would be for all elections going forward, I would assume that we're talking.
For as long as it's the three of you, yeah.
Right, right, okay, very good. All right, um, social media training.
So Primex offers online training. It's for a half an hour, you do have to sign in individually, and I, I, it reminds me that I didn't get a response back about everybody getting their own username and login, but I would expect that that isn't a problem. So, um, I know that there have been concerns among the board in, in, you know, what is appropriate social media use for employees and elected officials, and so it's an opportunity and it's free if you wanna do it, and if you, you know, you all are welcome to do it, you can mandate that employees do it. We need to pay people for whatever time that they're using for any kind of training, and then they would get a certificate that we can put in their personnel file to show that they.
But they're often have to have a computer, so they're probably gonna have to be doing it at, on, at home.
At home, or at the library, or here, or, you know. At home or at the library or here or, you know.
But it's okay to do it at home, right?
It is okay because you, you'll get your username and password and you'll get your certificate and you can bring your certificate in to show that you did it.
And then the time of someone getting paid would, would be.
Just their half an hour at home doing.
I mean, the amount of time of the, yeah, the program, the, doing that. I, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, I think at a minimum department heads, but I, I don't think it can hurt to have everyone spend half an hour with it.
Yeah, or at least ones who run their department's websites on social media, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a good point because not everyone's posting on behalf of their department.
Right. But I think fire and police have someone other than the chief who's doing it, I think.
Yeah, because we have to find that out.
But now. You're just talking about departments now versus the other raw insert websites that are on social media.
Well, people that are, like, people that are private, you can't do anything to people that are private, but like rec committee, like since they have one, you know, whoever it is that manages that page should do it.
Should at least do it, yeah, I agree, okay, alright.
So. For clear, let's just be clear, are you mandating this for those department heads or other officials? For all officials who manage or own or interact with an official town Facebook page, is that, is that what we're saying? I just wanna be clear what I'm telling department heads about what they or their employees.
And what's our recourse if they don't do it? So mandating is a little different, I mean.
You, you can mandate things to, to employees, you can't mandate things to elected officials and committee appointees. So you can, you know, strongly recommend or, you know. I just wanna make sure that.
Because police and fire might be associations and not the official police and fire websites. So that is a dead end and that's volunteer.
Well, they say, you know, they say that there is a fire department one and there's a police department one. So, you know, somebody who's an employee is managing.
I don't know who is doing, but I know that the association ones, they, but they might be someone different.
Well, so, so we can't have any part in what the associations do.
Right. But this one says official raw insert department.
But it is, you know, it will teach them good practices that one would hope that would carry on.
Oh, I'm not a doubter. So what's recourse if we mandate and they don't do it, that's my, that's my question, that's all.
Well. Employees, you know, employees who report to you, I would say, you know, you can always, there's some kind of enforcement action over, you know, you want something to happen and they don't do it.
Yeah, you withhold the paycheck, I mean, I, today I was doing an anti-sexual harassment training at work. If you don't do it eventually, they're gonna say, you have to do the training, like that's the covenant of working here, you gotta do the training. So, be it, period.
The elected officials is, is harder. You know, the committee appointees, you know. I think we'll be compliant and, and I would just hope for the best.
I think we do, I think we will go without having the word mandate in there, I think that they will probably.
Strongly encourage those other ones, yes.
And if we don't see these certificates coming into the office, then we will talk to the department heads to have them highly encourage their departments who are speaking on behalf of the, their organization, take it.
Well, I mean, it is.
It's thirty minutes, you know what I mean?
I don't, I don't think there's really an issue.
Yeah.
I don't either, but what if it isn't, what if they don't do it, then, then it's like, if you say mandate, there's nothing we really can.
So.
Because I don't, I don't know.
Take away their access, I don't know how we do that.
So one of the things that's.
I don't think you can because it's, it's, they're the ones who created it, not us.
Well, 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 though, if it is the, you know, official, you know, official fire department, you know, the fire chief's elected. I'm not sure there's a whole lot you can do with the official police department or official highway department. Local entities of the town and you can tell that they have to shut it down.
That's true. Yeah, that's true, that's true.
I just wanna bring to your attention that they will discuss in the training best practices, which will be helpful for them. But really first among best practices is having a policy. So a policy really ought to follow so that everybody understands that now based on what we learned in the training, this is our policy about how you will run your Facebook pages.
Each department or the board of select can do a policy that they all must follow?
Yes.
Okay.
A town policy.
Town policy, okay, alright.
So.
And you shouldn't have someone sign for it, that they can save it.
Yes, so I have a sample one, I will, I will review.
Send to us, okay.
Yeah, and, and send to you, yes, I, I have a long time ago, but I'll, I'll resend it.
Okay. Alright, so you'll follow up with us on either how we sign up to do it with our username and password or what, however.
Yes, I need to, I, yeah, I need to follow up with Primex about how to get the usernames for individuals because right now I'm the only one with a username, so I don't know how that works, but yes, I'll find out. And then I'll send an email to all the department heads and copy the board so you can see that.
Okay, very good. And give them a timeline too, I would say, we try to at least give them a timeline and see, and tell them that we want their, so their certificate to put in their files. You know. Okay.
Yeah.
Any comments or questions?
No, no, I think we see.
Nope.
Okay.
Great.
Alright, so the non-public that's taken care of, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Policy review.
So you all had a number of comments about the purchasing policy last time we discussed it, so I made some edits based on those comments and I emailed you all revisions, sorry. So.
Looks quite neat, so.
Red text is text that I added. Red text with strike through is old text that I deleted. There are some things highlighted just for you to sort of take notice about. Mostly it's. You all were working from an old version the last time and I know you had seen some edits that weren't reflected in the paper copy you were looking at. So not all of this is new from what you've seen. The amounts have changed for the thresholds. Section eight. The bottom of section eight was based on a comment you all had made that you all have the, you know, you'll consider having the town attorney review RFPs. Emergency procurement, I remember nobody liked that word practicable. So I put in an alternative for you to consider.
Like that one.
Blanket purchase orders, you all discussed having the first one not be more than seventy-five percent of the budget line. And then you all can approve subsequent ones if necessary. I added, in section sixteen, I added that red paragraph, which is what we discussed about having the town administrator approve all of the regular bills that the select board currently approved.
Yeah, so I was thinking about this after, like this is a purchasing policy, not a bill approval policy. Not that this isn't valuable to have in here, but it's like.
It may not be the right place to put it.
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't, I don't think I would remove it, I was just like, we're, we're mixing apples and oranges, like a little.
We can also rename the policy.
Yeah, like financial guy. Yeah, I don't know.
Purchasing and processing, you know.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll, yeah, we can think about that. Financial payment processes, you know. But I think it is a good, you know, a good opportunity to document that process.
Yep.
Since it's not otherwise documented. But I take your point because you're right, it's, I, you know.
Are, are, are we ready to adopt this tonight or is there still outstanding?
You all haven't seen this final version.
Okay.
You have it now in your email, so what I would suggest is that you look at it in the non-strike through, like final version.
Yeah, that's hard to read.
And, and see it in its readable version and see what you think of that.
And then put it on the next, the next meeting to have it approved unless it's.
Right, and then you can also, you know, email me copies, comments if you want me to incorporate a change and then I can present to the board, if there's a, if there's a change, I can present a, a different copy for your review.
This is great, thank you. Thank you for doing this.
So that's that one. You can work on the, on the other one, on the, we can't do that, well, we have to, we have to take it out until we get an ethics one, but the credit card.
Credit card is, yes, I think credit card probably ought to be next, which doesn't, it's not much.
Right.
So it should be relatively easy.
Right.
And I'll send it along.
Oh, we have it, you gave it to us.
I thought I did.
Yeah, I didn't know, we had already gone, I couldn't remember if we've gone over it.
I don't remember, well, I don't remember comments about it.
Okay, so let's have that, yeah, and then having them have their, signing their, when they get a card.
That, that absolutely happens, yes, it does happen, so. But there's not a lot of turnover.
Did you say that you got an ethics one that you?
I've looked at ethics ones, I haven't found a good one. There's, I found an ethics ordinance, but that's big and that's town meeting, so. It seems the place to start is with, you know, an ethics policy or some kind of code of conduct. That, that I don't, I haven't found a good one. I would. I would leave that phrase in the purchasing policy about an ethics policy.
Well, didn't you say once approved or something?
Once approved.
Yep, 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 yep.
Just so that it references something, even if it doesn't exist, that once it does exist, you don't have to then revise purchasing to say,
Yep, yep.
Read your ethics because it's really important that finance reflect ethics. Once you have ethics, that's your biggest liability, I would say.
Yep. Alright, so giving us the opportunity to review your changes and stuff, we'll put it on, so we'll put the purchasing policy and the credit card policy on the next round to get the.
Yes.
And if you have something for the ethics, then we can.
And I'll send, yeah, and I'll send the social media along, just as a reminder that I sent those before. Before we move on to other things, Miles took a draft, he took a stab at the CIP. So I didn't know if you all wanted to review that because this is the last meeting for items to be approved by the board for inclusion in the, in the town report. So if you had comments, changes or none, even better, then we can.
Did, what did you change?
I don't remember, to be honest, because I did this quite a while ago.
Okay.
Basically, because we're not buying the articulator loader this year, uh, this twenty twenty-one. So that should be.
Yeah.
Green over there, right, in twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, because we should do, yeah, yeah.
So this, this green box will move over to next year.
Yeah, I did that.
So I think the major changes were allocating money to fire engine and tanker truck replacements where we hadn't allocated money before. Because the generator wasn't as much as we thought, it was only thirty, not sixty. That was the major change.
I'm not sure that the version you had originally had that total allocation, so you probably disbursed twenty twenty allocation to different projects, I'm thinking.
Yeah. But basically tried to keep the yearly amount.
It's close.
You know.
Yeah, yeah. No, yeah, it looks like it is, so that's good.
Of course, this will change the, wait.
Any second.
Yeah.
The minute that someone comes with a new priority.
So was, so was our intent to keep the articulator loader on there or was it to get rid of it or to do something different?
Yep, I think that's a conversation.
I think like thousands of lots of sidewalks and shit.
I'm personally not in favor of it.
Well, I wasn't either.
So if we're deciding to take it off, to deprioritize it, then we need to redistribute this, that money. Which I can do, but we won't have a chance to approve.
Maybe put, maybe put it out to get a, kind of re-look at this and, so leave the money because, I mean, it's something that may have to happen in the next couple of years, you don't wanna lose your placement.
Right.
So to say, but I'm thinking something a little less expensive.
Yep.
That could do the same type of the job and let him do the research and come back to us on it.
Yep.
When he came to us with the articulator, with the used one, how much was that?
Fifty.
Like fifty-five or fifty?
Fifty-five, I thought it was. I just think that eighty-five is a lot of money for, and I'm not sure that what is.
Yeah, I don't think it was in eighty-five, these are, used one's fifty-five.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, it must have another purpose to, I mean, but that wasn't, that's probably what I got caught in.
Didn't he say he could use it for?
So it'll do a lot of the things that the skid steer can do, so that the skid steer can be dedicated to the transfer station, which is less work for the skid steer and will help to extend its life. So I believe this vehicle would help with snow removal the way the skid steer does now. And then it would also have the sander on the back so that the sidewalks are getting sanded.
So apparently there are eleven different series and twenty-six configurations and over a hundred and seventy attachments for this multi-wanted loader, so you can.
Total class money.
Yeah, but it's, it's, I think the one that he presented was one for snow removal that had that attachment.
So it can be whatever you want it to be.
You buy, spend another five bucks for a different, like a bucket attachment or blah, blah, blah.
I see summers that just go by where I work every time we have snow, so I mean, I, if it's what that is, I mean, yeah, it's a snazzy little thing, but I'm not sure that it's a lot of money.
So would you like me to give him that feedback and ask him to find something that's similar for less money?
I think, I think a little less money and not necessarily used as much, you know, but what, what can we do for sidewalks that isn't gonna be an eighty-five thousand dollar piece of equipment?
Or has he been talking about sidewalks and things that what would make us happy, but is there another benefit to it? Like is, because we rent tobacco whenever we need one, right?
No, we have a.
We have a backhoe, what do we backhoe?
We have a backhoe, but we did rent an excavator.
So if, if he's thinking maybe we could get an excavator attached in for this for cheap and he's thinking it could be used anything else, then that would be, you know, it's not just a sidewalk machine.
Yeah, during the CIP process, he, he's kind of rethinking all of the equipment. So selling the backhoe and getting a excavator.
Skid loader.
Yeah, so I think we need a lot more clarity in that plan. And, you know, what does that cost us? You know, the tobacco, I think, the price isn't here, but it was like eighty thousand dollars or something. So that still has a lot of value if we're gonna trade in on something, but we need to see it in, in black and white, like a whole, whole plan.
The other thing is. One of the things that I'm just kind of curious about is, is how renovating sidewalks and redoing sidewalks might make the existing machine work better on new sidewalks.
Right, right, yeah.
I don't know what, how much that may or may not be true.
Yeah, I just think it needs more conversation before we take something off and to find out if there is something that is lesser that can just still do the same job, and, you know, and I think that's a fair question to ask him and have him do some research. I would leave it on there right now as a holding place, but, and you know, it's something that can be revised. I would leave it on there right now as a holding place, but, and you know, it's something that can be revised, you know.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll publish it this way, but in the meantime, I'm going to talk to George about doing some research to get ready for another conversation.
Yeah. Yeah, but, you know, just because it's a lot of money and, you know, just to say for a sidewalk machine, you know, I mean.
Yeah, it's a tough sell, in my opinion. So I had a question mark on the nineteen ninety-one, I didn't know if that, that fire engine is actually from nineteen ninety-one.
That's, um, that's not a fire engine, that's a, um, oh, what, where are you?
Uh, line, line eight.
Yeah, it's a fire engine.
I thought you said freight liner.
Oh, no, sorry.
No, fire engine, nineteen ninety-one replacement, so that must be the nineteen ninety-one one that they.
Oh, alright.
I, I just, I had a question mark there, because I didn't know if that was the actual year of that truck.
I think your phone might be ringing, tell me. It's probably the, the oldest, it's probably the white one, the oldest white one, probably.
Yeah. Yeah. So if we can just find the year.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and the other question mark, um.
It's in silent mode, it's why would I keep?
Was the, and I think this was on here, um, as.
Vibrating?
I, I heard vibrating.
Well, because it's an existing piece of equipment that he was talking about not replacing if you're going to get this articulating loader instead, so that's kind of part of the trade-off, is that if you, you know, you can completely redesign what the equipment stock would be for the highway department, but as things are now, if you're not going to get an articulating loader, then
Yeah.
you ought to plan to buy a skid steer at some point soon, or something.
Again, it was only whoever sits in these three seats at the time, is going to have all this history in there.
Yeah.
And they end up both, if, you know, I mean, and the position, person's, yeah, this is a planning pool at this point, but,
Well, right, right.
and he may say, if I get this, I don't need this any longer, but in two years, that might change, or whatever.
Well, and the fact that it's still there is a bit of a question, you know, what is the plan? Okay, so, um, so again, we'll publish it, just as a.
I think we can publish it as is, I mean, yeah, um, and like I said, it changes yearly anyway, so I'm, I'll let you information to that.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Miles, thank you all.
Alright, so, we are at, um, we're at six, town administration, uh, board members' activities and updates, Miles?
Um, just the election tomorrow.
Okay, I have election tomorrow, and Wednesday I have sewer and water, it's Wednesday, right?
Budget committee.
Budget committee, I know, but for the sewer and water, the budget committee, that religion, and Thursday, Sunday, Thursday too, I can't think of what it is. No.
No, because Rex meeting Wednesday.
I don't know, I can't remember what it is.
School for?
No, I don't know, but anyways.
There's nothing on the calendar for Thursday.
Okay, maybe it's personal, I know I had my full calendar, it was a long week, uh, anyway, so that's what I have. I have, uh, SRPC on February twenty-seventh, any election tomorrow, there you go.
Excellent.
Can I?
Last week I attended the, um, the meeting with area communities about the stormwater permit. This wasn't the regular stormwater coalition meeting, but it was the meeting with, um, city and town managers and their engineers about their reaction to the permit, um, the new nitrogen, specifically the nitrogen permit, so, the upshot of that meeting is that the communities are going to, Rochester and Dover have both done a lot of research into the science, and the science doesn't make sense. They, they are capping our nitrogen loads into the river, um, at a certain number of pounds per day. They're doing this to all the communities at whatever, whatever the level is, a hundred, um, pounds per, I don't know.
Twelve.
Well, for us it's twelve, for other communities it's more, but.
Like three hundred or something before it's done.
The, the point is though, that they're capping it, and capping it means that you, you have to reach the levels, you, you have to get your nitrogen down to the levels that they're approving, but then what happens when there's development and there is more sewage that would up your levels, but you can't up your level, so it really stops development. And really stops development, but it also doesn't seem achievable, because it requires doing something with non-source point, um, stormwater, which means, yeah, the communities have done their research and have found that approximately ten or twelve percent of the available landmass in their communities is um, public right-of-way of some sort or another, in other words, they can only control a very small part of the land. So, the state is essentially requiring that the municipalities get onto pu- to private land, to, you know, do things to private septic systems in order to meet these nitrogen levels, but the state law doesn't allow for that, and also for banning pesticides, and rather fertilizers, but, um, that's also not something that, um, local communities can do. The state has to take a bitter, bigger role in those ways, but they're also not, um, asking the municipalities to do something that is legally within their purview to do, um, and so there's general agreement and frustration about all of that with the communities. So, the last go-around of, um, of permitting was similar in that the science didn't seem to make sense, and Dover, um, fought that science with the state and ultimately, um, got the state to do a scientific peer review, which in the end supported the science and supported Dover's argument, and, you know, life got better for that version of the permit. Here we are again, and the state is refusing to submit a peer review, submit the science to peer review. At the same time that the permit is in a public comment period, so the first step is that there is a, um, a public hearing on February nineteenth, which I will attend at P's, um, and I would encourage the water sewer district to attend as well, because they are also subject to this, whether or not they know it yet and have been notified, um, to, to give feedback to the Department of Environmental Services and, um, Region One of EPA about the, um, the science involved in the permit. That, that's step one, after that is, um, or separate from that is a public comment period with EPA specifically about, um, the ramifications about a lawsuit with, regarding the, the permit, and whether or not we agree with the changes to the permit that resulted from the lawsuit. Um, and then sta- stage three of this is that, um, we are going to try to get all of the governing bodies of all the different communities to sign similar letters urging the legislature to do what they can do about, um, fertilizer and, you know, the parts of the, this, that, that aren't really relevant from, you know, the municipal standpoint, but, but urging, um, the Department of Env- Environmental Services to submit to peer review, so unified, unified, consistent messaging throughout this process. I can't say enough for how much we are benefiting from the engineers and consultants and time of the bigger communities around us who have done the work and done the science. We would be lost without them.
What do other towns do, our side?
They are hiring consultants and they have people, they have people who are working on it.
So we would have to pay someone to do something, yeah, yeah.
We would have to pay somebody to figure the. This, we're also very unique in this situation in that, um, with the exception of Newfields, Newfields might be like us, but we might otherwise be the only community that has a separate, um, a, um, a sewage facility that is not part of the town, and yet the permits are connected. The permits are connected because if, because your total nitrogen is capped, so if you're doing more from a wastewater standpoint, then you don't have to do as much from a stormwater standpoint, and if you're not doing enough as far as wastewater is going, then you have to do more, you know, as far as stormwater goes, so I do not understand yet the implications of that in this community where they are two different organizations. So stay tuned, but, um, it was a really great meeting, it was really great to see so many people in the same room, um, approaching this together and sharing their data and research and time.
Are you the only one who knows?
Yeah.
I'm sure it's the only one on the floor.
Yeah. Yeah, so I will be at some point coming to you suggesting that you sign some kind of resolution asking the state and EPA to revisit this.
Alright, anything else?
That's the biggie, no. Um, we do have welfare, oh, actually, before we go into welfare, you have a number of things I think you're discovering in.
Yep, yep, I have a request for disbursement for three thousand dollars to the, um, public library.
Um, so there are two items I will tell you, um, that you are approving at the same time you have checks, and that's just because of the nature of what they are, and that's the first one, so if you don't approve it, I would have you not sign the check, or we can void the check.
Okay.
So that's one of them.
So it's for collection, development, programming, library supplies, magazines, subscriptions, and museum passes. Um, and I would move that we sign this request for disbursement?
Second, alright, so this is just part of their budget line in the budget, and they're just asking for a disbursement.
Yes. It's a cash flow.
Yep, okay, alright, any questions? Alright, all those in favor, say aye, 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 okay.
Aye. Uh, the purchase order, um, I move purchase order one nine zero eight to Jeanette Gagné. Uh, two hundred and twenty-five dollars for deliberative session minutes.
Okay. Sorry, any discussion on that?
No.
Bearing none, all those in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye. If he's listening to each sign.
Yes. If he's paying up, any explanation?
I'll move purchase order, uh, one nine zero six to the Postmaster, three hundred and fifty dollars for, um, two thousand nineteen lien notices.
Second.
So that, that's just an estimated expense, it's almost time to notice people that were about to lien their properties, because they have unpaid, um, bills.
Okay.
People always come in at the last minute to pay them off, so it's really hard to write a check for that, because you never really know how many there's going to be, there could be twelve today, and then five the day before, and then on the day you get ready to do it, it turns out to be three or something like that, so, that's what we think at this point, but I'm asking that, I have authorization to put it on my credit card for up to that amount, just because it's really hard to get a check signed, it has to be ready on that day, it has to go out on that day.
This is certified, and sending it certified, right?
Yes. Yes.
Alright, any questions?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye. One last purchase order, I'll move, um, seventeen ninety-seven to Overhead Door Company for seven hundred and twenty dollars for, replace two door receivers at the fire station.
Okay, alright, um, any discussion on that?
No.
Was this what he brought a couple of weeks ago, and we just ended, does he invoice this at all?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, all those in favor, say aye, aye.
So these are sheets of their totals by hour and also by day for the total number of, um, vaca- all the vacation and sick time for, um, that people have on the books as of the end of twenty nineteen, signed by their respective supervisors, looking for a signature of the board. This goes to the auditor, because these are liabilities, because if somebody should leave, then that amount is payable to them. So there's a column for hours, and then a column for that amount of hours, which equals the number of days, um, for both PTO, which is vacation, and for sick time.
Okay, so how many, how many days are you allowed to carry over every year?
There is no limit on the number of days, but they have to be used by the end of June of the following year.
Whatever you carry over?
Yes.
Not sick though, right?
Sick though has, has a cap of forty-eight, I, I believe it's forty-eight days, so if you're at that number of hours, then you can, you know, if you use a day, then you're, next time you earn a day, you'll, you know, but you just can't carry over more than the max, you can't ever be at more than the max.
And what is our policy for, what do we give for, um, vacation and sick yearly?
All full-time people earn, everybody earns a, a sick day per month, um, so if you're a fifty percent employee, that would be four hours a month, as opposed to a full-time, which is eight hours a month. Vacation varies, um, depending on how long you've been here, you get one week for the first year, and as you are here longer, you get more time.
And is there, there's a max too?
The max is five weeks, and I think you have to be here over nine years to get it.
Just nine years. I have to be there for twenty-five, when I get my five weeks. Alrighty, anybody have any other questions on these, so, I just signed them, do I have to vote, I have a motion to.
Yeah, there's one signature.
Yeah, a, a move that we authorize, um, the chair to sign the pay-off year-end totals for police and non-police employees.
Alright, alright, all those in favor, say aye, aye.
That's it for this folder.
There we go. In my folder, I just had a question on the, um, um, the audit, it says progress bill still in process. It's eighty-five hundred, how much is the total?
I think it's fourteen-five or something, he, he, it doesn't mean that it's half of that necessarily, he's just done most of the work.
Yep.
Um, he's done all of his onsite work, and then after he gets past April fifteenth, he'll write up his findings and
Okay.
submit a final invoice.
Okay, and this is his first invoice?
Correct.
Okay. And, make sure I understand what this is. Almost, anybody else? So we are, any input?
So Leah Gold, four twenty-six Washington Street, I was just wondering, the cap, shouldn't it, um, for employees' time off, wouldn't it make sense for it to match like sixty days, so that people who are doing FMLA can be paid for their time off? Something to consider among the board. Then, uh, for the addendum to the voter's guide, um, could you please look into, um, the state line verifications, Portsmouth is having a problem with the sports booking not working at certain establishments, because it's within five hundred feet of the main state line. And if you're at like the post office, um, in Portsmouth, you cannot place a sports bet, because you're too close to the main state line, which might affect our legion.
They're not applying for it.
Well, we don't know that they're not, I mean, they're not the ones who petitioned to have it on there.
They're not going to, oh, so once it gets approved though, that they can apply to the state for it, even though that they're not part of the petition article?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, once it's approved, it's out.
Once it's approved, right.
Once it's approved, they might just find that it doesn't really work.
Well, that would be there.
It would just be like a consumer.
They're about, they're about a thousand feet.
Yeah, a consumer in Portsmouth reported it, and there was a whole big newspaper article, they couldn't go into a bar and place a bet, even though the bar could have, because they were too close to the main state line, so. So, it might bring additional revenue to the community and it would be interesting to know if the legion is affected by that ruling that it's too close to the state line or not. And I wanted to say thank you and ask that you continue to work diligently on your policy review because we're in the same process with the REC and we are re, putting in our manuals and so forth. Please re, please review the town reports or the town social media, um, policy. So, it's good to have it on file because we're asking whoever the REC committee is hired, recommended, follow your policies too.
Thank you. Anybody else? Bearing none, the motion to go into non-public for, um, uh, blocker.
Uh, I move we go into non-public session for RSA ninety-one A colon three, uh, C.
Two C.
Oh, yeah.
It's not, yeah.
Section two, letter C for welfare.
Okay, seconded, okay, roll call, Jessica, yes, Nace, yes, Miles?
Yes.
Okay. You don't want to go, yes?
No, I'm, uh, multi-class.